Okay. So, um, the clerk will read the oath and then we will repeat to her the oath.
I'll read the whole thing since you guys have a copy of it.
Shall we stand?
Oh.
We shall stand. Stand.
Not you, Dave?
Not me?
Oh, yeah, you did.
I'm already in.
You should probably just stand.
How long am I to do more?
All right, good.
Two more years?
All right. Ready? Okay.
I do affirm that I support the Constitution of the United States.
I do affirm that I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Idaho and that I will faithfully discharge all the duties of the Office of Trustee of Lakeland Joint School District, number 272.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Idaho and that I will faithfully discharge all the duties of the Office of Trustee of Lakeland Joint School District, number 272.
In Cooney and Bonner Counties, state of Idaho, according to the best of my ability.
In Cooney and Bonner Counties, state of Idaho, according to the best of my abilities.
It should have been upon the screen, it would have been easier.
You're right.
Then we could look up and not...
Yes.
We will only need to sign, make it official.
Congratulations.
We lost the pen neighbor.
Oh, do we sign and then?
Yeah, we'll sign then, that makes it official.
Do we print below the signature?
Yes.
Yeah. And on that, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order, it is 6:12. Welcome everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
Motion to approve the agenda?
No motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. For announcements, just the standard announcement, um, I'd just like to remind everyone, these board meetings are business meetings held in public, they're not public board meetings. The board is governed by Idaho Code 74 and Title 33, Chapters 5, Idaho Administrative Procedures Act, IDAPA, and follows our district's policies. The time for public input is provided for the public to express themselves to the board, it is not a time to engage with the board, nor is it a time for question and answers. The board in its discretion may ask clarifying questions to ensure it understands the input provided, however, no discussion or conversation takes place. All input will be received within a three-minute time limit. Based on that, do we have any public input for this evening? I did see a couple people write, but I don't know if there is any.
Anybody?
Nothing? Okay, perfect. Moving into the annual reorganization of our board. I will turn the meeting over to Lisa. Pass the gavel.
I'm all powerful for three seconds. I will take nominations for the position of Board Chair.
I'd like to nominate Trustee Bain.
I'll nominate Trustee, uh, Thompson.
Any other nominations? Okay. If you would please, on your ballot for Board Chair, indicate your vote.
All right. Yeah, that's how it's written to begin. I'm sorry. I'm gonna have to do it.
And I will read out the votes for position of Board Chair. Um, Trustee Bain, votes for Trustee Bain. Um, you didn't circle a, you didn't circle a candidate.
Oh, I didn't circle either. Oh, that was you. No, that was you. Oh, no, no.
That's Dave's day.
Oh, so, okay, you, so people didn't...
We just wrote the nominee.
The names on the bottom.
Yeah.
Gotcha. I think we're actually supposed to indicate in the vote which trustee voted for which candidate.
It is on the sheet.
It is. It says...
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't say the name. Sorry. You're good, you don't have to, the name's already up there. Sorry. Bob, Trustee Jones, uh, voted for Trustee Bain. I'm sorry, I just catch the yellow highlight. Uh, Trustee Quimby votes for Trustee Thompson. Trustee Bain, voted for Trustee Bain. Trustee Grissom voted for Trustee Thompson, and Trustee Thompson voted for Trustee Thompson. Three to two vote for Board Chair. And I will now open the nominations for Vice Chair.
I will nominate Trustee Grissom for Vice Chair.
Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Trustee Bain.
Any other nominations? Indicate your vote on your sheet. All right. Trustee Grissom, voted for Trustee Grissom. Trustee Thompson votes for Trustee Grissom. Trustee Quimby voted for Trustee Bain. Trustee Bain, voted for Trustee Bain. And Trustee Jones voted for Trustee Bain. So, three to two vote.
Okay.
We'll give you back your gavel. Congratulations, Chair Thompson and Vice Chair Bain.
Oh, just switch it. Uh, yeah, I took the thingy out. Wanna try it?
Sure.
Oh, this is tough. Am I going to hold it up in older line? It might be, yeah.
Thanks, Brock.
Thank you. All right, sham, cool.
Sweet.
All right. Next, we need to appoint a District Treasurer. I would like to nominate Jessica Grant, the more CFO, as the District Treasurer. Okay? Yeah. All in favor for Jessica being the District Treasurer, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Uh, we do need to appoint the clerk of the board. Um, I would like to nominate Maria Parker for clerk of the board.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We do need to appoint a temporary clerk in the absence of the clerk of the board, but we have recommendations for that.
I would nominate Olivia Shoddywitt.
Okay.
Okay.
Olivia, are you willing to assume the temporary position?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. And we do need to, uh, appoint a custodian of records. But we'd like to have any discussion on that, because I had mentioned at the last board meeting that it might behoove us to move that position to someone that is not the clerk of the board, um, but I don't know, uh, we didn't really have, like, a debated discussion on it.
I think that since the clerk of the board answers to us, that it should remain with the clerk of the board.
Okay, fair enough. Other input?
No, I mean, the records clerk doesn't answer to the board though. I mean, the records request is a district function.
That's true. The custodian of records is a representative of the district, the clerk of the board is a representative.
Yeah. I mean, but I don't see the, the difference. No.
But we can leave it there.
How much time is spent on the records request?
Well, that depends on the request.
Right.
Um, I think Olivia had mentioned at the last board meeting that you would have ten or twelve?
Thirteen, I think.
Was it thirteen?
Yeah, and I think I've had three or four since that meeting.
In a month?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Gone off very much time.
Well...
This is the last meeting.
Depends on the request.
Last.
Yeah, it does, it depends on the request. I do know that we, we have a few constituents that are consistent requesters, so that kind of, um, rolls into something else, but...
We could just send them everything.
What's that?
We'll just send them everything.
Well, the biggest point is, we're not supposed to be creating records to send if we don't have it, it should, it should be a non-issue.
Yeah.
So, that's the one component within the training that is kind of hard for some people to grasp, because we want to fulfill the request, so we're willing to create that record, which we're not supposed to be doing. So...
Uh, just because it's not a printed piece of paper doesn't mean that it's not a record within our system that we can print the, print a report. It is still a record, benefits within our system that needs a corrected report.
That I understand and agree with. So, do we have any nominations for the custodian of records?
I would nominate Olivia, uh, sorry, Maria Parker.
Sorry.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Okay, we do need to set the date, time, and location of our regular board meetings. Currently, we hold the meetings the second Monday of the month. I know there's been some frustration due to the length of the meetings. Given the size of our district, it is challenging to think that we should be able to navigate all of our business within the two-hour timeframe, doing it once a month. But, I can say December's was pretty nice. November's was pretty, and tonight's looked great, so I don't know if everyone is still content with once a month, if we want to go to twice a month, or if we want to go to once a month with tentative backup. I, I don't know what you all would like to do.
I'd like once a month, if, if we need to do it, then do it.
Okay. We could hold once a month with a backup meeting, um, like we did in the olden days, and set the board meeting limit to a specific timeframe, and then whatever isn't accomplished throughout that first meeting, then we hold a second meeting. If people want to choose to do that.
I would move that we continue with our current date, time, and location of board meetings.
Okay, once a month on Mondays at 6:00 p.m. At the district office. Would you like a different day than we?
I liked Wednesdays way better than Mondays.
You like Wednesdays?
Yeah.
By a minute.
How...
Mondays are, Mondays are...
I, I will be here forever.
No, I know that, but I don't know, I did notice that, like, the long-range planning committee is on a Wednesday.
We can, we can move...
Move whatever.
Yeah, but all those meetings are set around the board meeting date being on Monday, so if we switch the board meeting date, then we just move...
Perfect.
So, the first week, first week, or the first Wednesday of the month.
The first Wednesday of the month?
Yeah.
Okay, we could do that.
Does that get financials enough time?
Well, second Wednesday.
Second Wednesday.
Second Wednesday.
Second Wednesday? Okay, would you like to amend your motion to...
I would offer an alternative motion.
Perfect.
Using Wednesday rather than Monday.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Uh, we need to either approve or deny, uh, Resolution 2024-0108 for the appointment of assistant treasurers and designated signatories for each respective school. We did receive an attachment on that.
I move to approve Resolution 24-0108.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
I think it's a resolution, so we're...
Oh, thank you. We need a roll call vote.
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Trustee Grissom?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bain?
Yes.
Trustee Quimby?
Yes.
Good, moving on to the code of ethics. Typically, we read this aloud. Would we like to do that this time? Huh?
No.
No? Okay.
I mean, that's, it's on our website. I mean, I mean...
I don't see the necessity. Has everyone read through it?
I have.
Yeah.
Perfect, okay, then go ahead and sign. Oops. Twenty-four. Twenty-four, I put a third. All right. That concludes the annual reorganization of our board. Moving on to reports, we have the financial report. Does anyone have any questions or comments, concerns? I did have a question. Um, within all of these, uh, reports, the beginning equity balance is an estimated amount? Is that, why is that?
Um, you'll notice in the financials, there's the, the actual column. It's the estimated amount, because when we prepare the budget, it's an estimated fund balance.
Okay.
Um, so the actuals for the start of the year is in the actual column. Because there is some fluctuation between when we prepare the budget and when we close the year.
Okay, so there's the fiscal year budget, the revenue, then there's an encumbrance column, the fiscal year to date, and the over/under. I guess what my, my, um, confusion is, is respectfully, I know the budget is prepared pre-audit, but then after the audit, in the past, I believe, the, um, budgets reflected the audited numbers.
When we do the revised budget, it'll reflect the audited number.
We've never done a revised budget, so it's, it's all, once the budget is set, that is the budget.
That is the budget.
Unless you revise it, and then, then the numbers can change to that.
But if it is the budget, then why is it an estimated amount if it's the budgeted amount?
Because that's what it was when we adopted the budget.
Okay.
But the finalized numbers came in different than what we had estimated in the...
Okay. Maybe it's just to hang above the word "estimated." That was my only question.
Is it possible to change the pers, the last column from being percent over/under to being percent of budget?
Or new.
Used or remaining, one or the other?
Yep.
Rather than...
Is that easier in landscape mode for you?
Yes.
It's way better, yeah.
Welcome.
It's definitely more.
And one, one more little comment, is, could we, um, have a date or an as-of date at the top? Because I don't know if this...
This is about March 31st.
Okay.
Yep.
That's what I was hoping, but...
Yep.
It's always end of month.
Always end of month, yes.
Of the month before a meeting.
Yep. I will add that too.
Does anybody have any other questions?
I...
The notes on the, um, CTE state?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for those, I do appreciate them. But I am curious... I respect the, the one asterisk is for estimated explanation. Cost funding for the fiscal year 2024 in the amount of 101,824, is that not reflected on here?
Um, when we do the budget revision, we will add that in. We have seen additional funding from the state.
Okay.
A one-time funding from the state for the CTE programs this year.
Okay.
So, the 101,824 was additional funding that we didn't have knowledge of when we prepared our budget. So, when we do the budget revision after the budget workshop, we'll incorporate that number. So, I just want it in there so that if you knew, um, if you noticed that there was higher expenditures than budgeted revenue, there was a reason we received funds for that.
Okay.
And Corey's, Corey's, uh, CTE funds, um, for his grant are also in there, which is why you also have that number on there.
Okay, okay.
We're not overspending, we do have revenue to cover it.
Any other questions? No comments? Okay. We're done? Moving on to the consent agenda, we have the minutes of the previous meetings, HR items, regular and special bills. Are there any questions on the previous minute, the minutes of the previous meeting? Um, I would like to say on the, uh, December 27th, we do need to remove, um, points A, B, and C, and in fact, D, because none of that happened. Um, and I don't know that we would want to have that on the agenda, because it, I mean, we didn't call the meeting to order. I don't think we did the pledge, I don't, we didn't do any of that. So, um, that shouldn't be reflected on the minutes, because that didn't occur.
You could perhaps leave the call to order at 8:00 a.m. In essence, that's what we did, we came together at that time, the other two items, but we obviously did not do.
Except I thought we came together at nine.
At nine?
Yeah, we didn't come together at eight.
Yeah, we changed the time to nine.
Right.
Yep, it's probably this on the template.
Yeah.
Because a meeting was posted, so...
Oh, it was posted for eight?
Mm-hmm.
Oh. Yep, so we called it to order at nine, then. So, change the availability times.
Right.
And not all board members were present?
Correct.
That must be changed, because Trustee Quimby isn't here.
Okay.
He was waiting.
Yeah. Tons in the sand. On the regular meeting, so 12:11, the, um, on item J4, it says that, um, a motion made by Trustee Jones and seconded by Vice Chair Grissom to change Policy 2700P to include weighted and underweight, should be unweighted.
Thank you.
Where did you see that? On J4.
Mine says unw weight.
Let it...
Underweight, under the motion. Oh, the up here is like, oh, gotcha, okay. I was like, why it says unw weight?
Her computer probably.
Yep, gotcha.
Auto-changed it for her and...
Yep.
We don't want to be either way.
Sometimes you gotta tell auto correct, but it is not correct. This coming from somebody with the name Randy, who's spelled with an I. Trust me.
Any conversation on the HR items? We're kind of wondering, poofy, oops, if you could, um, send the staffing wages and benefits like you did with the previous one, that would be great.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, on the stipends, what is a curriculum assistance?
Um, because we only have Lynn and me basically, um, doing everything related to curriculum and teaching and learning, uh, she needed some assistance with, um, when we adopted ELA and science this year, we needed us, and math overall, which she needs some assistance on, um, updating all of the curriculum guides and going into those new programs and putting the correct assessments in, so we're across the district all using the same things. And so, we had a teacher who offered to help, and so we're just paying her as a stipend to do that work outside of school.
Why is it that the middle school library leads get a new librarian stipend on top of already being happy with job description of a library lead?
The stipend is actually because we don't have a, a media specialist, a certified media specialist. We used to, Tiffany Young used to be at Lakeland High School, and she's a certified librarian. The two middle school people have stepped into that leadership role, so they, um, they meet, uh, quarterly with all of the librarians, and they're ensuring that we are doing our diligence with regard to the kinds of books we have in the libraries and the process of leading through titles that wouldn't be appropriate for our libraries. And so, they do a lot of work outside of contract hours, so...
I should have noticed that it was just happened to be both of the middle school ones, so that's why I was like, well, just wait a minute, I'm, so I just wasn't sure.
Their title is a library lead, but everybody's title is a library lead.
And I know that they were the ones that were in here when we were talking about library books and stuff, too, so...
They're helping us with all...
So they're helping us with all the children's bookies, their libraries.
Any further discussion on the HR items? No, okay. Regular and special bills. Any questions or comments? On the fraudulent check, that was fifteen hundred.
Um, so the vendor contacted us, um unfortunately, an employee that they had was cashing their business checks into their personal account.
Nice.
Um, so we were able to assist the, um Chelsea did ultimately work on this one, but we were able to assist them in doing arbit to pull back the funds.
Okay.
Um, and then we reissued it to them.
Okay. Oh, you're right. Thank you. When anyone needs to talk with us, and I'm sorry for just saying, but if you could come to the podium, introduce yourself and uh identify, that would be great. Does anybody have any other questions? Yeah.
Nope.
Okay. Based on that, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda with the corrections identified.
With a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Old business, we have the superintendent follow-up, um.
Do you have a thank you card tonight for the board to sign?
Okay.
For the tribe.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for catching that, I did not.
I don't think it is. No, it is not, so, um, it's not further on down the list, but it appears in your follow-up, you would like some direction on the grant? Is that what you're asking us?
Um, uh, following the December board meetings, um assistant superintendent Azley uh let me know that um
Or grants.
Somebody had asked about who on staff can write grants for us, and so um she went and identified some different locations where we could access grants.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but uh when we brainstormed, everybody's stretched really thin at the district office right now, I don't know, I, I don't know who I would, whose plate I would add that to.
Okay.
Um, because some of the grants, especially if you're going for, in federal grants, um there's a whole process of you have to actually get approved by the federal government to, to write a grant.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and get a number, and, and that takes time, and then their grant applications are um labor intensive, and so we agree with you, there's a lot of money out there for us to maybe um try to get.
Mm-hmm.
We're just struggling with who's gonna do the work.
Maybe there was a misunderstanding, because as I remember it, the grant issue was brought up to the board, like the board was just responding to some of the saying that there was grants out there that they thought maybe they could get, or a lot of grants we were missing, and so I don't know that the board was asking.
I may have misunderstood, I was, okay, if I wasn't here, but that, that's the follow-up that.
Yeah, we, cause we did say a little bit about grant writing.
Yeah, cause some of what was brought to us in, in the December meeting, it, I mean, there's, there are, there is grant money out there that could accomplish the mission of other people.
Yep.
Um, which definitely would be more beneficial than trying to put that weight on the ta- tax bear.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I guess it just depends on.
If it's the right person, they can, their grant writing could potentially pay for their position, you know, if it's somebody who's good at getting grants.
Yeah, somebody who's really good at it, yeah. Do we have anybody uh around the district, building administrators or others who have any background in that area?
We have one teacher who's prolific at writing grants and getting grants, and that, uh, no administrator to my knowledge. Uh, Julianne Simpson, who's our gate teacher, she's the one who went out and got the fifty thousand dollar grant for the summer student camp. Chelsea can attest to the number of grants that Julie receives because she knows to manage all the money.
Way back, way back when, uh, when I was a building administrator, I actually did some of the federal program stuff, you know, so it, it depends on the person's work mode and what their expertise is, but, you know, if you have somebody in the district that you could tap for that kind of thing.
Well, I would hope that whoever wants something, if there are grants, that maybe they can connect with Julie, and maybe they can work together, or at least Julie can say, you might wanna do this, or might wanna do that. Um, it would definitely be beneficial in trying to help with all the shortlist, so.
Our armed district safety specialists are also doing good at writing grants.
Yeah, so. Are we good to move on to the financial follow-up? Okay. Jessica, could you come stand at the podium, say who you are?
Jessica Grant, I'm chief financial officer.
Thank you. Um, who's paying for the appraisal?
Um, currently it's coming out of the board of education budget.
We're paying for the appraisal?
We're the ones that have the property.
Okay. Um, was that a condition?
It's part of, yeah, currently legal, yes, we have to seek an appraisal in order to convey the land.
Okay. I'm, just because this is like an ancient history issue, that's why I'm kind of wondering, was it our legal that said that?
Yes.
Okay. Was that Megan, or was that?
It was Megan.
Okay.
The city attorney for Rafterman also felt very strongly that we should give an appraisal just to protect their interests.
Maybe I'll, uh, what it proves one way or for the other, it transfers from one gun with identity to another.
Right.
Right.
It's not like we're selling it, but took pride apart, but.
Right.
Both of them indicated to us that, that we, that stuff needed to be done before we could convey the land.
It's part of legal code, for legal code.
If it's worth a lot of money, maybe the whole world would do that.
Right. Ancient or not. Um, on the impact testing, I thought that was supposed to be a wash, is that something that's not washing for a reason?
Like to, like Chelsea Persil. Um, look.
Please identify yourself.
Chelsea Persil.
Thank you.
Uh, so the impact testing, I'm sure in the very beginning of it was a wash as, as we got it initiated, because we had to have every student come on, and come on and take that, but now as we have new incoming students, it's just our new students that are having to do impact testing. Or our new athletes coming in that are doing impact testing, so it's not quite a wash anymore. Um, we wanted, uh, what I would like to do is see how everything washes out by the end of the year, to see if we're closer to that number, and then we would invoice, or we would kind of have a discussion on what we want to do from that point, if we want to um request that money from the schools to cover the cost of that. Or if it's not quite washing out, if we even want to continue to charge students to do this. And since it's coming out of the um, the lending money for the athletics uh safety budget, if we just have that charged to their safety budget and not charge students, but I would rather it be a wash and then have that money come in, but we kind of have to see how it goes at the end of the year.
Okay. Sounds fair. Nice.
I'd love to hear that.
Yes. Uh, trustee Jones, would you like that, just as a kind of, at the bottom, where we have the standing information, we can update it monthly, or would you just like it at the end of the year?
Uh, yeah, and year end is fine, I think, but we definitely wanna have it for not a full consideration point.
So the program of cost is a contract with someone to do?
So the sports impact testing, um, they basically come in and set up a computer and do the initial evaluation. It gives us a baseline for the student, so that if there is an injury where we suspect.
No, I, I understand what it is, but is this somebody coming, and we're paying this twelve seventy-five to somebody to come in and do that?
It's an authorized software service.
It's a software.
Okay.
License.
Okay.
I had, I asked all those same questions. Apparently if you have a concussion, then they have, so they have their baseline, and then you take this exam again, or whatever it is, on the computer. If you have a concussion, you don't, you, you will fail, and because there's a difference between your baseline and what you're doing right now.
Yeah, I I just didn't know who we were, who, what we were paying the twelve seventy-five for.
The other thing that we talked about today, um, that the board probably needs to chime in on at the end of the year when we bring this back, is that right now, the district is paying the twelve seventy-five for each school. And the school's collecting money from the students, but they're not giving us that money to help cover the costs.
Oh, no, no, oh, no, no, no.
So, we're gonna rectify that unless you feel differently, but we're gonna.
No, we don't still deal, we don't think any of us feel a little bit, that's.
So, but the bigger question will be, it's ten dollars and it's required, do, do we want to continue to charge the kids the ten dollars to help offset the cost of that, or do we just, do we just pay the twelve seventy-five license and not worry about it? That'll be the other part of the conversation for the board at the end of the year, when we see how much money they're actually bringing in. And if, how close it gets to the twelve seventy-five for each school. Okay.
Assuming there's an injury and a failure of the second test, is there, what happens then? You have to get a referral to a doctor, right?
There's a concussion protocol that they have to follow, so they have to see a, they have to see a doctor, and they have to be released by the doctor to play.
In order to come back. Is there a, pre-rec is a period of time that before we can come back?
Yeah. Yeah, there's a very, the protocol is um very specific. And it's, it's not a protocol we wrote.
Went through it like before she went to state, like it was, it was, she might not get to play at state, cause the, the protocol would, you know, yeah, cause
Really?
Just timing of when she got hit in the head, and, yeah.
Question, is it required?
Is what required?
Concussion testing.
Yep. They can't play unless they're, unless they're released right now, or.
Somebody said that, like, Sam Point doesn't do it, and some other schools don't do it, they don't have a concussion testing. Disponer, I just read your rumor.
Yeah, I don't have any idea.
Why you would do that.
Here's another question, does this apply to all sports? Yeah. Swimming?
Mm-hmm, cause they could bump their heads going into the water. Golf. Get hit in the head, with a club.
You don't wanna get beat by a golf ball.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that it's required for us to do the testing, I'm reading the statute. Um, so we may wanna have Lippa weigh in on that. But um because if you read what the statute says, we're supposed to educate the families about concussions, what the signs and symptoms are, et cetera. Um, it doesn't say anything about requiring the district to do the testing, so.
Sorry, Lynn made, uh, the room trustee, um, Quinby asked that question, I thought he was asking if it's required in our district. Right now, we are requiring all students to do impact testing.
Okay.
I thought it was an I H S A thing, not the statute, but I H S A, you don't.
We can do some checking if you.
No, it'd be good. I mean, I realize it seems like a minute amount, um, but it does add up, and I'd like to make sure that the right parties are paying for it before doing this.
Well, and if we're paying, if the district is paying for it, and the schools are making money off of the deal.
Yeah, the schools aren't paying for it. That's ridiculous.
We're doing a lot of work.
Yeah. It just makes me wonder how many other programs we're doing in such way that.
Well, these two ladies are finding those needles in the haystack and bringing those to our attention when they come up, so we have remedied some of them.
And we appreciate that.
And I really wonder if, um, when impact testing started, if it wasn't paid at the building level, and that's why it was charged, and then at some point, it got switched over to here, but we still continue to collect. I'm sure that's how that happens, yes.
I'm sure that's exactly what happened. Right. Okay, I don't have any further questions, does anybody else have any questions? No, no. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, moving into the um new business action items, we have supplemental curriculum, um it's like it's a coding cyber network, pretty cool. Anybody have any comments, questions, or inquiries on this supplemental curriculum? I don't know. Are you familiar with it?
No. Well, the concept, not that particular program, but yeah, I was curious how much training our, our actual IT people have, and say that they, this is pretty basic, I mean, it's good though, definitely good.
Any conversation, comments, anything? Then I'll entertain, entertain a motion on the supplemental curriculum.
I'll move to approve the supplemental curriculum.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to policy ninety-two hundred. Um, this was a policy that was brought forward by uh Jessica, she made a couple corrections. And um, the policy committee has kind of given Jessica the go-ahead with all the financial policies to just do what needs to be done and bring them to the board, because the policy committee is not as well-versed or equipped as Jessica, and it speeds the process up. Does anybody have any questions, conversations? Concerns?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on a policy ninety-two hundred.
Move to approve.
Second.
With a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Uh, moving on to the January twenty twenty-four bus bid, um I have no questions. Okay, it appears that as part of our rotation, we've gone out to bid, the only bid we got was the same contractor that didn't, you know, uphold their end of the bargain. So the recommendation is to actually not replenish buses this year, which might be who bus, given everything else that's on the plate, yes.
Can I add some additional information?
Once you introduce yourself.
That's Jessica, thanks you.
Thank you.
Um, I, we did speak with the, our regional contact for transportation at the state, um, and none of the companies are providing a bus bid. Um, just because they can't guarantee the timeline.
The bond.
The bond, sorry, the bond, the bus bid bond, um, because they can't guarantee the timeline. So even if we were to get other bids from other companies, we're not receiving those big ones. With that, we can still table it, or we can, I would recommend potentially moving forward with the purchase of just two buses instead of three. Um, that way we can account for any fluctuation in price.
I just don't understand how we can engage in a contract, but the terms are null and void if someone decides that it needs to be more.
We can actually write into the contract if we decide to move forward with two instead of three. Um, we can write into the contract that we have final approval on the price, and we can back out without any penalties. Um, if they choose to go above and below, we're able to feel comfortable in paying. The mar- the price of the bus that we did receive, the bid that we did receive, it's market value currently for. The mark, the price of the bus that we did receive, the bid that we did receive, it's market value currently for the buses.
Mm-hmm.
So.
How is that valued in comparison to the last buses we purchased?
About twenty thousand dollars more, which is about where they're at.
Did they have any guidance from the state department about the, what they should hear?
Basically, that, that price was pretty spot on for what they're seeing and that.
No gains with respect to the, to the bid bond?
Just that we add in the language to be able to back out of the contract if they, the price increases above what we're comfortable sending.
Did they give you any model language?
They will.
Okay.
I apologize, I didn't have that information when this was due for submission to.
No, that's fine.
Can you review for us, uh, once again, uh, what we had planned to expend for the purchase of three buses?
We anticipated, um, about three hundred and sixty thousand, it came in at four hundred and seven, which is why I'm recommending we just move forward with two. We were estimating around a hundred and twenty thousand a bus.
Do we know what buses, these buses we're gonna replace? How old are they? Do you know by chance?
Can I invite Jessica, our transportation director?
Please, just please identify yourself.
Jessica Danner, I'm the director of transportation.
Thank you.
We're not gonna be replacing any buses since we did, um, we sold that last lot of buses, that got rid of most of our aging fleet. So we're gonna hold on to the rest of the sub buses that we currently have.
Okay, so this would just be adding to the fleet?
Yeah.
Do we have drivers for the buses?
They would just be replacing route buses that are breaking down. So then those buses that are getting higher in mileage can go to the sub line.
I move we authorize a purchase of two buses as suggested by the CFO.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Four in favor, one opposed, motion carries. Moving on to the Earl Connections RFP.
Jessica, can I see it?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, I do have a question, um, on this that's being brought forward, um, because last month it was brought forward that we change vendors for the access points. So, and we asked for it to be tabled, um, because it seemed, yeah, that we're like.
We're talking two different kinds of access points. So the last meeting, that was the single point of access for the doors, the key cards.
Mm-hmm.
These are actually our wired Wi-Fi access points, these little
Okay.
things that are in the ceiling that round the Wi-Fi around, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So we, as the RFP states, we need to replace our, uh, elementarys, excuse me, our secondary schools this year. Um, and then we'll go out with the next rate, um, annual E-rate, um, procurement process, we would be able to go up for the elementary schools.
Okay.
The elementary schools were installed earlier, so they don't need to be done right now, but we're coming up on end of life on our existing, um, access points.
This is Wi-Fi access points as opposed to building access?
Yes. This is not key cards. Yeah.
Yeah.
Internet connection, not key cards.
Okay.
And this would be paid with the E-rate?
So we would get a twenty-six percent reimbursement from, up to a twenty-six percent, it's based on our free and reduced application rate. Um, and then the rest would come out of the state technology fund, so no general fund dollars would be used to remove access points, these wireless access points.
Are we going, do we know if we're gonna have to be updating a whole bunch of other stuff in order to do?
Um, so this, this bid is going for the replacement of a hundred and ninety-seven access points
Right.
by your licenses. Um, and then we're actually asking for quotes to install as well because unfortunately, our IT department's pretty, um, they're pretty busy right now installing all the cameras and everything, so we're asking for installation with this as well to make sure that we stay on target for installation.
So that's an added cost?
Yes, it is an added cost.
Could be paid for by?
It'll be paid by the state technology funds.
But we don't have that cost in front of us, so.
That's why we're going out today. That's why.
Do we have a ballpark?
Not off the top of my head, yeah.
I don't imagine it'll be very inexpensive if they're doing a hundred and ninety-seven.
When I looked at it, I, I can tell you, I don't have the exact dollar amount, but we have enough funding in the state technology fund. Even if it came in at the high end, that it would be covered and still have funds left over in that account.
What would the high end be? You don't remember it?
Not off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
What else do we pay on that fund?
Um, I think the last thing that came out of there were Chromebooks.
And these five-year licenses, would we still be paying for them annually, or is it?
It's a five-year one-time.
Okay.
And then we'll pay for the one-year licenses on the other ones, um, so those will be annual cost. But we can ask for those when we do the E-rate application again next year. This application, in addition to our traditional RFP process, also gets posted by EPC on their main website. And so companies across the nation bid on it, um, so they also post the procurement on our behalf.
Okay. And then the goal would be next year to take, to tackle the elementary and bump them to five-year?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
And at this point, you're just asking for permission to move forward with the RFP?
Yes, correct. Yes, and then any results on that will be brought to the board for final action.
I'll move to approve.
Sorry.
So you have the motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to discussion items, um, we need to select a date in February for the budget work session. Oh, man. Next month's board meeting will fall on Valentine's Day, please plan accordingly.
Ashman's Day.
Ashman's Day.
I don't plan to use the fourth day, I mean.
Mm-hmm.
We live to the board meetings to Wednesday.
Remember?
Remember?
I'm gonna come on Mondays.
Just throwing it out there. Plan accordingly. Accordingly.
We anticipate that you're probably going to want to have a few board workshops for the budget. Um, Jessica's plan is to start with a zero-based budget and build through the budget instead of just rolling over what we've always done.
Great.
And so that will just take some conversation time on our part.
But this is just for the?
This is the budget, not for facilities.
Is this the budget for the next fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay.
When were we gonna have a workshop, weren't we gonna have a workshop for?
Work session.
Work session to discuss
The adjustments to this year's?
The adjustments to this year's?
We can combine them, I think, I think we start with that and then we can start into the budget conversation for next fiscal year if that's acceptable. Excuse me, Jessica, I'm CFO.
Thank you.
I, I just wanted to throw that out there, that it's probably gonna be more than one meeting that we're gonna have.
I would say we should tackle the budget, um, adjustments for this year first, which is what Jessica's recommending, and then it would be zero balance build after. So, when is the modifications to the budget due to this date?
June third, by June thirty, yeah.
I was thinking it was in February.
We, that was my initial understanding, um, after clarification, I, um, in the December board meeting, and I know I had put that we have until June thirty, yeah.
Okay, okay.
We have lots of time.
Okay.
Thing with our annual budget, we have until the beginning of June to get the budget approved, so we have a good amount of time, which is why we wanted to start early.
Right, but it would seem to me that in order to build from a zero balance budget for next year, we have to have a good handle on what this year was. So, what shall we do?
So maybe, I don't know what the end of January looks like, but if we could have that meeting prior to the February board meeting, then she can bring that final document for the board to approve so that we can publish it and, um, because we, we have to do a board, we have to do.
What's the publication?
It's the same as a budget hearing.
So it's two weeks.
So it's two weeks, okay.
And, and that would be a budget hearing and then at the board meeting, right?
For the revision.
For the revision.
Approval, yes. We would have to publish it, looking for, um, it gets costly, which is why most districts don't, they just operate with what they have and they don't do a true revision unless it's.
Yeah, but ours is such a hot mess.
Right. Which means going backwards.
By no fault of yours, I just throw that out there, public can hear that.
So going backwards, Jessica probably would want to be able to submit it, if we were trying to get it done by the February board meeting, she would want to submit it on Friday, January twenty-sixth to make sure that it gets to the press in time to be there.
Yeah, I don't think that that's. Well.
So I thought we were looking into February.
To break, yeah, to, um, that's just if we wanted to, to do the budget hearing in February. If you want to have the budget hearing in March for the amended budget, then it gives us more time.
I would say that, instead of trying to cram it in that, and everybody, um, stress and hurt hustle over it, it'd seem more feasible to hold it in, in February. Because then we could hold the budget, once that's straightened out, in March, we could hold four meetings for, or board sessions, work sessions for the budget for the next fiscal year. Bob?
Well, I'm, I'm wondering how critical it is, uh, that we do a formal budget amendment.
It's not necessarily critical, um, we're gonna build the budget as a zero-based budget, so we're basically wiping this slate clean and saying these are the expenses we know are gonna happen, this is where they're gonna live in the budget.
Yeah, I would prefer to devote my time and energy to that as opposed to going through the motions of the other.
The biggest thing that we would change with a budget, a full budget revision, would be the beginning fund balance for the general funds. But the state already knows what the true fund balance is per fiscal audit, um.
And you're gonna estimate going into the next year anyway.
Exactly. Um, and then there's some adjustments that need to be made as far as where things are sitting currently, but they're within the same fund. So it's not really gonna change the overall budget, it's just gonna move it around from one line item to another.
As long as you can outline those particular issues and go through the process, I think we'll be fine.
No problem.
That's just my opinion.
I, I agree with that, though. Because like Jessica said, it is extremely expensive to publish anything in the paper. Especially a budget hearing notification thing.
And we are required to publish that one twice.
Okay, well, what do you want to do?
Well, I don't know how we got to this big formality, I thought we were just gonna have the workshop so we could understand how we got here. Was the only thing, but if nobody cares how we got here and how we ended up in the hole we're in, I mean, then we just move on.
No, I think we care, I just don't think that we need to do a formal budget amendment.
Yeah, we, we never even got that part, we were just talking about, so we could understand, you know, that would be the topic of the, of the, um, meeting, you know, or the work session, whatever you wanna call it, um.
So I, I would think that would be the introductory part of our budget processing for next year. So we, you know, we're quite at exactly where we are, answer some questions about, you know, how we got there. So as you go forward, you know that it isn't that number, it's this number, and then we move forward. Trying to keep it as simple as possible.
Do you know what budget adjustments we really should make?
Amendments or adjustments?
Adjustments.
Adjustments, eh, um, we have some building level adjustments, building budget level adjustments that are done every year, um, as we true up to enrollment. Um, and then I have some stuff where, um, one of my questions was if we were going to move the, for the board into the board of education budget, so that would be an adjustment. Um, and then we have some additional money from CTE that I would put in there. And then just tuning up, uh, like we had one librarian who, in the budget, they're not in their building, but they're getting charged to their building, so it looks like a negative number. So it's just those kind of, money got put at one school for two people and it should have been split between two schools, kind of. So just internal adjustments really is what it truly is.
Okay.
And then ultimately, the fund balance is not correct in the budget, um, but that would just be reflected on the other corporate balances. So it's just, again, changing the numbers in two spots.
There were some situations where we have a line item for a program we actually run, and the former CFO put no money into that line item, so it looks like
Yeah, like our summer schools do.
Our summer school, our gate program.
Um, reach has money and we're no longer, do we reach? So little things like that where we kind of sweep that into summer school.
You know, I, I would think, you know, you might take the first half hour of our session and go through each one of those, identify each one of those, you know, and where, where the adjustments need to take place or where the number will be reflected differently going into the next year. So we have that as the background information as we start forward.
Yes.
I think trustee Grissom's also interested in knowing, um, where the, how we spent two million dollars, basically, more last year than what we were planning on spending. She wants to know, what it, what does that look like, like with special education, how did we do that?
Yep, no problem, we can deep dive on that, that's not.
Yeah, but I want.
That's what you're asking for, right?
Well, yeah, because I, I mean, it, it doesn't, I seem to be the only one, though, that it really matters to, because I don't understand how in the history of the district, we never spent that much money, but this one year we did.
I will.
And that's in an area, it was before you came, so I, and I understand that. So how did that happen? You know, and how did we have all of these numbers? And we're millions of dollars off, but, I mean, I would just like to know where, where it came from, how do we know we're not gonna do that again? How, I mean, that's a huge number. And in totality, it's four and a half million dollars. You know, I mean, if we could go every year and say, well, you know, they just put the wrong number and the wrong thing, with, which unfortunately, the district has a history of.
Right.
We need to quit, that's all I'm saying, and I'm not getting the answers. You know, but, you know, water under the bridge, whatever, move on, don't worry about it, you know, we'll do, you know, that's, to me, it's very important, and I do have people that ask me, but I can, you know, you know.
I think the community's asking the same questions.
Yeah, it was, it was huge.
Yep.
Yeah, it was it was huge, you know, and and especially in in areas, you know, the spending in areas that we have never done that before, and that was a very highly guarded and watched, you know, part of the district was the special ed, they were always so, you know, 'cause it's easy to overspend, you know, always so close to monitor and make sure that we are doing, you know, right and what we had to, and, um, I I would just like to see in black and white how we got there, yeah.
That answer. And how do we avoid it from happening
Yes, correct.
in the future if we don't know how it happened to begin with?
Right, correct, exactly.
I will say there are a couple things that we're doing to address that. One of the issues was this budget was built, um, not taking the transfer that the board approved into account, so that's part of the reason why the fund balance was estimated higher, because that transfer was forgotten. The way that we've, um, revamped the financial reports, you may see the estimated rolling fund balance, the previous reports did not include that, so you can see that number in real time, um, which wasn't included before, so that's one way to have that check and balance that, oh, we transferred money, how come it's not reflecting on this report? Um, that kind of check and balance in there. We also didn't have a plant facility levy last year, um, and so we did have additional spending, um, because we didn't have those funds out of the general fund. Um, I would be happy, I'll deep dive on the rest of it for you and have that ready at the board workshop, but that's two of the main reasons that we had additional spending last year.
Yeah.
Okay. So on that note.
Did we arrive at a date?
No.
No.
After all that.
Moving back to-
We need to know what we're talking about.
Right, we need to know what we need to have the date for.
When will you be ready, Jessica?
For initial conversation, um, at the mercy of the board, um, I'll work to whatever deadline.
Well-
How much time do you think?
Well, we don't wanna push you, though, I mean.
No, no, we want you to be ready.
Yeah.
Yeah, how much time do you think you will need to be able to answer for the mistakes of the past?
I g- anytime in February, I mean, I already have a lot of it outlined, just because that's
Okay. Okay.
how I got to understand where we're at now.
Okay.
Um, so if we wanted to do a f- in February, I'm fine with that, I I'm really looking for the direction on next year's budget as well as far as what the priorities are, so that we can build that into the zero-based process.
Right. Okay.
So looking at the calendar, um, right now, Thursday, February eighth, there's nothing on in the evening on the Eleanor for the district.
Is there anything on Tuesday, February sixth?
Tuesday the sixth, we have a long-range planning scheduled, although we won't, we can cancel that, 'cause we're not meeting them until we do strategic planning.
Actually. Right, we could, though, hold it in the other board meeting, because then we're all at that little round table, and it works.
Mm-hmm. But it's for the public, so we're like, we're public, um.
Oh. That's work session.
Isn't that open to the public?
Yeah, okay.
Anything we do other than executive session or whatever.
Right, right, right.
And I do set on long-range planning too, so.
Okay.
But we won't, we told Long Range Planning Committee that we wouldn't meet until the district's strategic plan was set, because a lot of their work is gonna have to tie back to that plan. So that's gonna get canceled anyway, so Tuesday the sixth does work. Thursday the eighth.
I'm good with either of those dates.
Yeah, okay. Are you good with Tuesday the sixth, Bob?
Uh, I, yeah, I can do that, I'm just referring to, to figure out to do the real work.
No, I understand that.
I'll be ready right this next day.
Okay.
We'll put, uh-
On Tuesday the sixth?
Yeah. Do you wanna add that to our board?
Six o'clock?
Yeah. Okay, next, we need a date in February, um, to do an interest-based bargaining work session. We need to review the actual contract before it goes to IBB for whatever they, the bartering back and forth and whatnot that we do.
Can we do it the same the same night?
Or is that a different?
I mean, it's, that should, uh, do you think, think that would be too much, I mean, if we looked at the contract and then discussed what was on it?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Do you think we need a completely separate?
Well, I don't know, it depends on how much you wanna push one thing for over the other.
That's true.
And, you know, will there be conversations, or are we just gonna rush through it and call it a day?
Right, that's true.
Well, the interesting thing is, uh, you know, what, whatever kind of goals we've set for IBB end up getting reflected in budget at some point.
Correct.
So since the two are semi-married, it's not not a bad idea to have a conversation as we go through each.
Will the, what, the IBB conversation will be an executive session? Or will it be open session? The law does allow us to talk about negotiations in executive session.
Well, at some point, it would need to be an executive session.
When does IBB actually start?
I don't know, we haven't been asked to entertain that.
Jason, provide.
We're just, because we are always, um, the cart is always before the horse with IBB, they do their thing and then they give it to us,
Mm-hmm.
and it's like, no, we actually need to be setting the ground floor for what they do. We don't ever have that.
So those are priorities, yeah.
Right, so when when the team comes together, the the teacher side brings their issues that they want to talk about and discuss through IBB, but this board has never given given that opportunity to have our issues as part of the conversation, so that that needs to happen.
No. Right.
And there are some just clerical things too that we need to go through with the with the negotiating room, and just make sure that those are taken care of, so, um.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Typically, we start IBB in April, after spring break. So if we did an IBB meeting in March, we would have plenty of time to be prepared for it.
So why don't we look at a date for March, in case the February board budget delio needs to go on to another day, then
A year in advance.
Yeah, that's true, you know.
we're not feeling so pressured to
Mm-hmm.
and not really do our due diligence.
Okay.
So looking at March.
It is, it's good.
Yeah.
So Tuesday, March nineteenth, and Tues- Thursday, March twenty-first are wide open for, uh, as far as the district calendar in the evening, and then Thursday, the seventh, is wide open.
Good with Tuesday the nineteenth?
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, okay. And do you, um, want the clerk to put that in e- as an executive session?
Yeah.
I think that would be best.
I'm not here to talk about your March.
Your what?
So we were loo- we were looking at the nineteenth.
The nineteenth.
March nineteenth.
Yeah.
The nineteen to the March.
Mm-hmm.
So nineteenth, is that it?
Mm-hmm. Six P M. Open.
Is someone adding this to the calendar? Was that you? Okay, 'cause I did as well, so now we have it duplicated, so I'll remove it. I'd rather it be on there twice than not at all. Next item is, um, to set a date for the board goals work session.
There goes our one meeting of the month.
Let's shoot for April on this one. No, seriously, I mean, we need to have the goals so that we can do what else we need to do that we've never been allowed to do.
I'm good anytime.
So we're just setting goals. We're just trying to understand what timeframe we're setting goals for.
I believe we're-
The calendar year, the school year, that I just was-
Well, why, this, okay, the strategic plan, is that an annual January through December, or is that a, a, uh, academic year of August through July?
Supposed to be.
Well, it would include the academic, it would include the academic year, and it still would include, because the district runs twenty-four, seven, two, sixty-five.
Okay. We can only? True.
The district runs on fiscal year.
Yeah, so it would be both of them, it's all encompassing everything, like, they're not split apart, it's just the functioning of the entirety of the district in all of its calendars.
Well, we do have a special meeting on the tenth of January.
We do?
Yeah, we do. We could do it after the conclusion of those executive sessions.
Do we have more than one that day?
We do, two.
We have two, okay. I'm okay with that, just a-
What do you think? That's the tenth, this Wednesday.
This this Wednesday? Oh, okay.
And then we could just chump that out, what's, what?
But that's, mm-hmm.
What's up?
We just don't know how long those are gonna last, sometimes they're quick, sometimes they take a long time.
You're correct.
So to drop that on the end of it, this is, I mean, if we're talking about goals, we wanna give ourselves
Yeah, we take a long time, in fresh frames.
sufficient, yeah, that-
Just do it the week after.
Yeah, I was gonna say, uh, the week or two after that, and just put a second meeting in the only way to-
Okay.
And I think that gives us time to-
Third.
Okay, third, but the s- I don't know, stu- or executive session, executive session, is that, I don't-
They don't page me.
I don't care, no, I don't know.
Tuesday, January sixteenth is wide open, Tuesday the twenty-third, Monday the twenty-second. I said the twenty-third, and we have strategic planning on the twenty-fourth.
I'd rather do the sixteen.
Oh, that's fine.
Would that work?
How old are you then?
Does anybody, um, January, January, on my hands, yeah, okay.
I'm sorry.
Bob, are you free on the sixteen?
Sixteen.
Not that one.
Third.
And that's still the sixteen?
Yes.
Bob say he was available, I I saw him shaking his head like he's signing.
No, he he gave a thumb, he gave a thumb.
Okay.
You know, goals, goals, or goals.
Yeah, I I can squeeze in here.
Can you?
Yeah, okay.
Would you rather do it at five-thirty, um, five and five-thirty, when we're formal?
Uh-oh. You do?
Yeah.
Okay. So then.
Then you'll just have two back-to-back meeting nights, 'cause the twenty-fourth is the strategic planning meeting.
I just didn't wanna do it that close.
That's fourth one.
Are you strategic, that strategic, that's not, that's a subcommittee meeting.
Isn't that the one I was supposed to do?
That's, yeah, that's, that's a full board, that's, that's your land.
That's four.
It might be helpful.
What about the eighteenth?
Yeah.
Is the boardroom open on the eighteenth?
No.
I have, uh, L E F.
We have Lakeland Education Foundation meeting.
Or show them your calendar, or she'd say.
I can reach out to Tam Noah and tell her we have a conflict and see if she could move it to Tuesday the sixteenth. Thought that it works better for the board.
Wednesday the seventeenth.
Um, I have a conflict that night. Yeah, policy committee is set.
Except that's gonna have to move it in, oh wait, no, maybe, oh, 'cause we do first and third, and we're the second, okay.
Oh. Mm-hmm. Yeah, you're back, you're actually back to where you were when you put them in the calendar.
Um. Is the eleventh, was there a conflict?
Of January?
Mm-hmm. Oh, wait, no, that's just Thursday, isn't it?
Yeah, I was like, that's three in one week, three in a month is bad, three in a week is really bad.
Um, I can, I can, I can work to move the Lakeland Education Foundation meeting, if the eighteenth is the date that works for the board, um.
What about Monday the fifteenth?
That's smart with the King Day.
Oh.
That doesn't-
I have a dream.
So do I.
Less meetings.
Less meetings, we can't even get our work done now.
I know.
There's a lot to do, tons to do.
So where are we?
Uh, you might as well jump to February, 'cause it looks like January will never work.
It's still working. The twenty-third doesn't work?
I mean, everybody keeps saying, uh, oh, I'd probably do the twenty-third.
Twenty-third works for me. Twenty-third worked?
Does that one, with, that one didn't work for you, Michelle?
Oh, it's not that it doesn't work, I just don't wanna do it right back-to-back with the Long Range Planning Committee, but, or the Strategic Planning Committee.
Strategic. Oh, yeah.
'Cause that's the twenty-fourth, um, but I guess do the twenty-third?
Or about the thirtieth, January thirtieth. But, I guess the only question that I would have is it, would it be in the board's best interest to know what your goals are for the district going into strategic planning? Not that they are the same document, but if we know that the board's goals with regard to finance is this, then that should be reflected in our, in our strategic plan, in the finance section of that plan, so there is some benefit to the board having your your goals before we get to the point where we start writing that strategic plan. Yeah, I think the first meeting's gonna be nothing but a bunch of chicken scratch and talking, I don't think it really matters, I don't know that we're at a point where we're ready just to put a plan together, are you, I mean, there's so much, yeah, we have so much going on right now with it,
Yeah.
I don't think it matters whether we do it after or before, I think it all can sort of meld together. At least we'll come away with the strategic planning information that we discussed to the board goals, and maybe that influences that way, you know?
That's true.
Um. And then once the plan gets written, which will be whatever, we get that done for. Okay, the thirtieth, somebody asked the thirtieth, that is open?
Okay, I'm good.
We're gonna do it.
January thirtieth.
Okay. D- and then, did you say five-thirty or six, 'cause I heard, I think I heard five-thirty over there, no?
Oh, no.
No, okay.
Sixth is my fix. Especially in January and February, six is better. Especially in January and February, sixth better, five thirty. Okay, and June.
And true.
To get from post-balls to here.
Okay, and the last discussion item is the clerk training. Um, it was asked of me if we might wanna consider some outside influence for clerk training, such as the, um, Lynn from Coeur d'Alene who's retired, um, there's some other resources that are out there. Do we wanna look at that for the clerk, um, of the board?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I think in the meantime, we can still go down the road of, I was Randy, we're doing it now, but, you know, board book training and all of that. At least there's that piece that's already done, that can chicken start on.
Mm-hmm.
Wow, who's asking? Okay.
Next.
All right, um, that being said, are there any, um, we have no action that needs to be taken, we've got dates to remember, and-
Can I ask a question about strategic planning?
Depends, what's your question?
Um, are you, as the board chair, since it's the board's plan, are you planning on leaving that meeting, do you want me to?
Well, I think given that we've never been to one of these, maybe we could collaborate and work together on it, yeah, 'cause I, I mean, we were,
it wasn't a thing, it wasn't allowed, so, um, that would be good if we worked on it together, I mean- I know, it's a- So I'll reach out to you and see if there's some time in your schedule and we can meet and kinda talk about what that first meeting would look like.
Sure. Yeah, that's totally fine. Um, Randy, do you wanna be part of that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, so, yeah, we'll just see what works with everyone's schedule, perfect.
Six o'clock or six o'clock, just the time here.
Board member input for future agenda items? Okey-dokey. With that being said, I do need a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code seventy-four two oh six one B. All right, we have a motion, and a second, we need a roll call vote.
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Trustee Grissom?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bain?
Yes.
Trustee Flinby?
Yes.
Okay.
On that, we'll take a five-minute recess and go into executive session.
Yeah.
Yep. You're, you're, there you go. There we are, okay, so we've come out of executive session, there are no post-executive session items, therefore, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting, it's nine twenty-one.